Tax incentive agreement between Tupper LLC, City of Stillwater, Oklahoma, Board of Education, the Benfender School District, number sixteen, Paint County, Oklahoma, the Stillwater Public Schools, Board of Education, Meridian Technology Center, Board of County Commissioners of Paint County, and the Board of Paint County Public Schools.
I make a motion to accept this action.
Motion has been made in second to approve the agreement.
Yes, for discussion, but either get to.
Motion has been made in second to approve the agreement. Any other discussion?
Yes, I have several constituents that are, have voiced their opinions with the twenty-five-year tax deferment.
Not in agreement to allowing the twenty-five-year.
For the twenty-five-year tax deferment, they're really not in agreement with the data center either, but they're not for the twenty-five-year tax deferment.
In, in any of the discussions that you have had, you was appointed to sit in all of those meetings, was there any negotiations?
No, it was just they, it was just like this was how they were gonna do it.
It's allowed under law, state statute law, my understanding, so, my thoughts, so, now it is a little, seems a little thorough, but it is allowed, and the city worked out the contract with them, and so, it's our discussion to decide, so, but, that's what I did in my discussions, talk. Is it allowed? Can you do twenty-five? And everybody I talked to said, yes, it is allowed, and that's what they, the city came, came to an agreement, and there were discussions with this company.
There, there has been a great amount of concern expressed over the potential of the Cimarron Link inventory, being able to claim eminent domain if they are tapped for power for this. My only concern is I don't want there to be any eminent domain people in their land taken in association with this.
The data center or the Cimarron?
With the data center.
Oh, I agree.
If the data center needs power and they choose to tap into Cimarron Link, then they're providing power to a local source, and to my understanding, then they can. I don't know if that's the direction of the going.
I don't either. Can anybody from, can we, anybody from the, anybody from the audience help clear that up for us with a question?
The city manager.
Yes, I just wanna make sure I'm doing it right, since it's my third meeting.
Okay. Do you have a board?
Please.
Okay. You guys, where do I can stand? Last time it was here, is this?
You, you.
Okay. Yeah, Brady Moore, city manager for the City of Stillwater, I'm here today along with Mayor Joyce, city councillor Kevin Clark, and our engineering team, Don Dodson, our chief public affairs officer, and there's representatives here from Meridian Tech and Stillwater Public Schools as well. As far as the question, I'll answer it first, so the project, to my understanding, is not related to Cimarron Link, that is a separate project, and my understanding, since the government has backed off of the eminent domain part of the Cimarron Link program, it has to be worked out privately, so, those, if, if that project is to, or it has to be worked out on private acquisition, or acquisitions of land, similar to this project, this is a private entity, any easements that they would need would have to be worked out on private, non-inminent, on non-inminent domain. The city, and just as a reminder, the city council last Monday night approved the EDA, the Economic Development Agreement, that is only for the first two phases, those first two phases run on one thirty-eight KB lines to supply the, the energy for the, those two buildings, that infrastructure is already here in Stillwater, back there, right there on Perkins Road, so, there will be a substation constructed on the land by OG&E, but to serve those first two, but as far as the contemplations for phases three through six, that would all have to be publicly discussed at city council. And I can give a quick overview of where we are in the process, if you'd like, just as far as this public process, would that be acceptable?
But if they do go to phases three through six, OG&E is gonna have to bring in figured lines.
Higher transmission lines, yes.
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 And that can affect leaving the domain to the property owners.
Lauren, do you wanna provide, I mean, OG&E is a private.
I know they're a private.
Private entity, so, I don't know if eminent domain would be in play for.
I agree completely with Brady's saying, how they handle that, I'm not aware.
But that goes into the picture of this, that we don't know that.
And I think to Brady's point, that, that agreement was, you know, this is just for the two data centers, the rest would have to be, would have to be back here again, right?
Yeah, no, it wouldn't have to be back before the county, but they'd have to be discussed at, at city council, yes, so. As far as where we are in the public process, the, you know, the, to answer, and to answer your, some of those discussed earlier, Oklahoma Local Development Act establishes these incentive districts in their, in the state statute for businesses that they want to attract to the state. Oklahoma said, we want to attract data centers to the state, we want to establish it in periods up to twenty-five years, but we want the local taxing jurisdictions to work it out, so whether it just be in the state incentive program, I actually, I think it makes a ton of sense, they let the local taxing jurisdictions work that out. We've been following state statute this entire time, the attorneys that we, that we hire and pay for at the city, the Center for Economic Development Law out of Oklahoma City, they actually helped write some of that state statute, and so they have been following, we've been following the, the law to the T for this project. The exemption period, yes, is up to twenty-five years, the local, the company worked with representative from each of the local taxing jurisdictions to establish what their pilot payments, so that's the payment in lieu of tax, and just to remind everybody how those calculations were formulated, they looked at all the different industrial projects, some of the largest industrial projects in the state, and they calculated the average square, ad valorem and personal property tax per square foot of those facilities, and then took that to three hundred thousand square feet, so these buildings that are being anticipated here in town are three hundred thousand square foot data centers, so they took that, did the math, and they proposed it to us, the local taxing jurisdictions, that this is the amount of tax that would be equivalent if six large industrial facilities were to develop on that property. That's the pilot payments, the city negotiated more and got those increased by twenty percent approximately, because we wanted, we looked at other projects around the state and wanted to make sure Stillwater was getting the best, not just around the state, around the nation, wanted to make sure Stillwater is getting one of the best deals. So the amount of pilot tax to the county is ninety thousand dollars per year, per building, with a one percent increase. There's also a basis value, Jason, our assessor, Jason Gomez, has been working with, or has talked with our attorneys, and in this project plan, or in the tax incentive agreement, it specifies that assessment will be made at the next round of the assessment period, which would be January first, twenty twenty-six, Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, and that the land is industrial zone, so it will have a base assessed tax that will be collected for, for the twenty-five-year period on the land. Everything that is built up from the land will be part of that exemption, but again, that's where that pilot payment comes in to each of the taxing jurisdictions. The city council passed the tax incentive agreement last Monday night, that triggered a sixty-day period where all taxing jurisdictions can consider the TIA, which you are all have on your agenda today. Last week, the Stillwater Public Schools unanimously passed it, as well as Meridian Tech's board considered and unanimously passed the TIA, and that is what is for you today. We have our engineers in the room, I know last time when we were here at the end of October, we answered a lot of questions on water and electric, but if you have more questions, we're here.
When will the health department vote? Is there, aren't they, they're part of this, yes?
Thursday.
Thursday, okay.
Yeah.
Just wanted on record.
Yes.
I knew it, but I just wanted to.
Yeah.
Just get on record. Another question for you, I know the answer, but I wanna make sure we have it. Will the utility rates go up for the people in city of Stillwater from the city, have city utilities, does that make sense?
Yeah, it's a great question.
Yeah.
So, we'll talk about electric first, on the electric side, because it's not attached to our grid, which the voters showed a lot of support, I believe it's seventy-five-ish percent that they voted for the OG&E to serve the property, that keeps it not connected to our system for the, the load that is serving the servers. The kind of office load, construction load will be connected to our Stillwater Electric Utility, that's great for us, that's just add like another kind of large industrial customer to our books, which ultimately does have a, a, a effect on our rates, lowering them, another, and then when it comes to water, because when you have a company of this size and this scale coming to your town, they, they need improvements to serve their project, has to be fully paid by them, our utility does not pay for the improvements to serve the project. However, if they do contemplate phases three through six, where those improvements need to be made to our infrastructure, whether it's our water treatment plant, our COF pipeline, they, they have to invest their portion of that improvement, so if it's a mid, mid, midstream pump station, like COF pipeline, and they have, we, we figure that it's, you know, sixty-five percent, seventy percent their cost, they make that improvement, that overall gives us a great benefit to our system and redundancy, and thus reduce, it takes that project off our books, which would have an effect on our long-term rates, our capital improvement plans, and that would reduce our rates, so, there is more potential in water to reduce rates with the improvements that they can invest in our community. Now, we're not saying that, we, that's our hope, but right now for phases one through, or one and two, we've calculated the capacity, and we have that available in our system to serve phases one and two in that zone, so, we talked a lot about that last time, and, and the fact that we have all these water rights, fifty MGD per day at COF Lake, we're only drawing about eight, eight on average, seven to eight million gallons per day, and we wanna keep those water rights. A project like this will help us justify to the state that we need to keep those water rights.
There has been some concern regarding wastewater, if it is gonna be chemical-free or whatever, I'm sure all this is inspected before it's discharged into.
Yes, oh yeah, absolutely, we require, in our economic development agreement, we require rigorous testing for all the wastewater that goes to our facility, in fact, it's, in essence, too clean, because it's, we, we have a biological plant at our wastewater treatment plant, now, we've calculated that the clean water that they're discharging for the first two phases, we have capacity and it won't affect our chemical, or biological process that we have at our wastewater treatment plant, but they know that future phases will have to be determined on how to discharge, but the state of Oklahoma also is involved in all of that testing.
I don't, I don't know if this is the correct spot for this question, but since, since the city approved two phases, why cannot the county just approve the two phases for the discharge?
That's a good question, it's a great question, so, my understanding is that they, the, the amount of work and due diligence that has to come into this project to just establish the land potential, is why they want to do the full six phases upfront as far as the taxing structure, as you can only imagine, people change seats in all different areas of government, and their seats too, and their attorneys, and so, it's better for them to develop that package for potential for the entire piece of land, but what's great, what we did as a city in our economic development agreement and our project plan is that we have the right as a city, there's a term length, term length of ten years before all those taxing, tax incentive districts trigger, and if they do not develop, so say they just do two phases, we can then, as a city, purchase, we have the first drive to purchase that remaining property and, and open it up for new industry or new development, so, there is those protections that we put in place for the city.
In reading through, I see that they have fifteen years to build all the data centers, is that?
That's correct.
So, if, if this was approved, and they built their last data center in fifteen years, and then they get twenty-five, it's gonna be forty years before we receive the full taxing benefit.
Yes, once that twenty-five-year period ends, then you get that big jump up to the, the full, full evaluation of the personal property and the ad valorem, or the property tax, yes, sir.
Any other questions?
No, I've had many people contact me in, in my district and from your guys' districts that are for this, I've had several people email me to vote no, but, you know, as a former educator and still a coach, so, I just, just had a lot of people, it's been, it's been a good community involvement, so I've really enjoyed this, how people reach out to me, I've had a lot, a lot of people on my end, specifically District Two, since that's where I voted in, have reached out to me.
Just for clarification, there have been some that has emailed saying that we'll be taking less for the land currently at school land, and these taxing entities, Stillwater Public Schools, Meridian, Paint County, and the health department get zero?
Very close to zero, so we turned in, Jason Gomez, the Paint County assessor, we turned in to state land board, the total number of acres, and we received for state-owned land, I, I think it was fifteen hundred dollars in change for all of the repayment of exempt school, school land in the county, so, it's, there's not a lot of value that is, there's no value basically assessed right now, so, in, in communication with the attorneys for the company, in, in the last couple of weeks, we've had a couple of, of different meetings, one of the, one of the things that was changed was, it said that within ninety days of a contract between the, the state school land and, and the company, that it was up to responsibility the assessor to adopt the project plan and determine the base value we negotiated, actually just discussed the statutes of, of Title sixty-eight that would relate to the timeframe that is our responsibility by statute to follow for all property, not just ten, for ten district properties, so, the base value wouldn't be assessed until the land use was to change or to change, so if the property were conveyed from one entity to the other, and then would be determined what its use would be, and Oklahoma's a used state, so if they, you know, if, if it took, if it took a while, and they allowed somebody to use the property for agricultural purposes, state statutes would determine that that property could remain a very low base, so, but with plats and those things, if they came in in the fiscal year of twenty twenty-five, they made a purchase of the property, there was a land contract, and they determined that there was gonna be a use based on lots or industrial areas, and they restricted the use of agriculture, then the valuation for the twenty twenty-six tax year would be where the base of, of the, the value would be determined. Now, I've also read that, and I, and I kinda just for a little clarity, it says in, in, in the agreement that the, for clarity, the exemption stands to any increase, nothing will happen. Upon receipt of an incentive district commencement notice, this county assessor shall ensure that as of the exempt applicable effective date duration of any applicable incentive district term, no ad valorem taxes are assessed against any qualifying exempt property, including land value above the base value of the incentive district. So, I think that's pretty, pretty crucial for the, the land to, to at least carry some use and, and value change, but it's gonna be determined by the fiscal year of the improvement for the transaction.
But currently, we've collected fifteen hundred dollars?
That's on, that's on twenty-two thousand acres of state land.
Oh, in Paint County, so this portion essentially?
It's a lot, it's zero.
Yeah. Okay. On, Brady?
Yes.
Was there anything written about the noise that this facility will make?
So, yeah, the, the, there was quite a bit of talk publicly, you know, with the neighborhoods, and we have really good meetings with the neighborhoods closest to the facility, the, the company behind this is built, they, they're the leader in the industry, they build high-end facilities, this is not a third party that's building a cheap facility just to sell it off to whoever needs servers online. Their facilities in the country, in our state, are quiet facilities, they're efficient water-cooled facilities, the decibels are less than the industrial standard for light industry, and that's at the point of, you know, near the building, as you get further away from the building, which these set off the land, then that sound is very, very mild, and I believe that sixty-five decibels is the, the average for that light industrial, and they said that's similar to like a lawnmower, or a, and that's at the point of, like, pretty close to the building, so it's, it's, it's very negligible, and they've been very transparent about that.
So, from the point, you're on the roadway or beyond?
Yeah, it'd be very little, I think, yeah.
Not even, are we able to hear?
Yes.
I got a quick question for Brady, so for clarification from my office, 'cause I do the deeds, is the land going to be in the name of the company or the City of Stillwater when it transitions out of the school lands?
It'll be in the name of the company.
So the company will be the owner of that and do the transaction, isn't it?
Yes, and their intent is to close on the property towards the end of March, is what I've been told, and that is, and what Jason said was on the call with both groups of attorneys, and, and Jason shared the exact information that was different than what they understood, they, we recessed, had a call two days later, and they said, yeah, Jason was exactly right, they recommended putting that evaluation to, is it January first, December thirty-first?
December thirty-fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, thank you, end of this year, and that way, the transaction will happen, they are planning to plat, it will be assessed, they want it to be fully assessed at that industrial rate, because they, and that base value again, does remain incollected for the, all the twenty-five years.
So besides the amount that's in the contract that each agent taxing it to will get, there will also be an ad valorem tax based on the first base?
Yes.
Okay.
Also, we discussed, and I wouldn't say negotiated, but made, clarified that any personal property that's involved with the construction process that does not belong to the company, so any contractor, equipment, job trailers, CONEXs, all of those personal property items that exist with companies that are subject to taxation as of January one, twenty twenty-six, any personal property that exists on the property that's outside of ownership of the company is subject to ad valorem tax. So if a company comes in from Tulsa, brings in a two hundred thousand dollar job trailer, and sits there for a year in the construction process, and it's, it's assessed as personal property, that improvement or that personal property item as of January one, twenty twenty-six, that is in our taxing district, is subject to ad valorem tax in, in Paint County.
Now, I, I read through the agreement, but I didn't catch, is, is our exemption for the data centers only? So if they switched and wanna do solar farm, or windmills, or anything like that, it would not qualify, or?
Yeah, that's correct, I mean, the, the, yes, the tax incentive districts, or the tax incentive agreement, project plan, everything is very specific on what the agreement is for, and it's of these six, up to six data centers. Yes, it was, yes, they can't come and change it to something else, yeah.
If they wanted to change it, would throw this whole agreement?
Oh, it would, yeah, it would be done.
Once this got data, the property values out there around this, people look past the rubs around it.
I, I can't speculate on what a builder wouldn't do, I, I, you know, that's one thing that we, we've seen adverse effects happen with different things, especially oil and gas-related, we've seen it, you know, over in the Cushing District where something comes in and values go up because of the anticipation of some new activity, or some, you know, some while back ago, there was a talk of a new refinery gonna be built in Cushing, we, we saw a big increase in land value, just because people anticipated that there were gonna be this, this, this new, this new improvement come in and create an industry and jobs, and people were gonna speculate that land values were gonna go up. We've also seen where pipeline crossings, some of those things that come through, people have bought property influx of, of RV parks, those types of things, and, and now, you, you can't give away an RV park in Cushing District just because there's so many, there's people that bought five acres, put two or three on, and the values went way up because people thought that that, that they were gonna, you know, make an increase in, in income by having these things now, there's so many that, it, we've seen an adverse effect on, on that, so it's hard to speculate on, without really knowing the full details of what's gonna, you know, how, how this is gonna be in the, in the long run, but I, it's hard, it's hard, I can't, I can't speculate on what, what the property values will do based on, on this, this coming in.
Any other discussion? Does everyone feel like they got enough information, or myself, I'd like to possibly just get more clarity, but as far as. Well, it, it would be okay, I think, there's no, we got ninety days, make the decision. We, we do have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the agreement.
Anything I can clarify, or anything else, and do you already know what that?
Well, mainly, it's the, the county wasn't on the, in the table to negotiate any terms for this, as far as the.
So, yeah, I'm gonna clarify, 'cause I was on those calls, that, when we began meeting with the company in January last year, a year ago, Mr. Cowan was on those calls.
Yeah.
He was very outspoken for the project, he was in support, and, yeah, I, I mean, I told Jason that when he took over and got to meet Jason, and, but I appreciate that Jason's wanted to do all his own due diligence and study on this project to make sure that it all follows state statute, and, and he can make those statements, but yes, if, Mr. Cowan was on, when, when they were presenting the evaluations of that pilot, and how they came up with those calculations for the average dollar per square foot, that is, that he was on those calls, so.
Well, I'm just saying, that didn't get relayed to me.
Sure.
No, it was relayed to Rhonda, Chris wasn't, or, I don't know, Seth wasn't here yet, so.
Neither was I.
How does this relate to other exemptions with other data centers around the state?
Great question, Rhonda. So, there was a, a facility that was announced earlier this year in, in Tulsa. Meta was the, um, company, Facebook was the company behind it. The exemption level that, uh, was contemplated was fifteen percent, so they did, or eighty-five percent exemption, fifteen percent of that ad liborum tax would come through. Um, when we did our evaluations, uh, I believe ours were right around sixteen percent, so we had a better deal like, but with that pilot payment, again, we increased that and got it. Now our, the deal is closer to nineteen to twenty percent is the amount of tax flowing through. So, um, through the pilot. And the, the reason for the pilot versus just having like eighty-five percent or eighty-one percent of the tax, uh, evaded is the, uh, school district, the largest taxing entity. When it comes through as a pilot payment, it can go straight to their general fund and not have effect on their state aid. And so, um, when you look at, not only is our percentage greater than that's, uh, project in Tulsa, but also the benefit to the school district, yeah, because it's, uh, coming in as a pilot payment and not tax.
How many years are they exempt for?
Twenty-five.
Oh, so the, the data centers in the state, how many years are they exempt for?
It was the same.
Prior is five.
Well, prior was under a different program. In fact, prior was a state program, and it had such a big impact on the state and the school districts there, on the, it, it kind of blew them away at the amount of, uh, evaluation that these, uh, the cost of the servers inside the data center. So the state rewrote the program. They wrote that state statute to allow this to be worked out with the local taxing jurisdiction and not a state program. So that was, that's what prior informed the state.
So there's another one that's twenty-five years of this day? Is that what you said?
Uh, the one in Tulsa, yes, the Meta project, yes.
How many of them are there around the state? What are the rest of them like?
Uh, there's, uh, the one I, there's the one in prior that I know of, and the one in Tulsa that's beginning. And I've heard that, um, there's, uh, possibly a new project in Muskogee that's being contemplated.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Mayor, please. Good morning. Will Joyce, Storeroo Mayor. Uh, just wanted to address a couple of the questions and comments, um, about the county's participation. One of the things that is part of this legal process through the Local Development Act is the review committee that happens with all of the taxing jurisdictions sent up represented to the review committee meetings. We actually selected three community members to also sit on that. Um, Ms. Markham served on that committee, uh, as well, and that was part of reviewing this actual tax incentive plan. It was presented initially with certain numbers in it, uh, in terms of what the company would pay in their tax, in lieu of taxes, their payments in lieu of taxes. Um, as part of that process, we did continue to negotiate with the company. The initial numbers, I can't remember all of them, I know the school district was about five-hundred-thousand dollars a year per building. Um, through that process, which, you know, the city has taken the lead in the direct conversations with the company, but we've had these discussions, uh, through part of that review committee as well, that number for the school district is now five-hundred-thousand dollars per year per, uh, per building. And so it is about a twenty, twenty percent, twenty, twenty-five percent increase in the overall payments in lieu of taxes that were negotiated as part of all of this, um, negotiation process, which that, uh, review committee, you know, what they finally approved as a unanimous vote of the review committee to send to council for, for, uh, for their approval, was that increased negotiated amount. And so there has been a, a lot of talk and discussion and negotiation between where the, this, the company first came to the taxing jurisdictions at the beginning of twenty twenty-four, from where they started, uh, to where we actually got. There was a lot of discussion. I feel very confident, you know, we did a lot of our own independent research on other data center projects, both in the state and throughout the country, uh, on what the total public benefit coming back out of this. Yes, it's about twenty percent or so in the actual payments in lieu of taxes, what, what they would be paying in, in property taxes, plus the public benefits of, uh, the, the OG&E franchise fees. We're, we're closer to forty percent in terms of what they would be, what the public benefit of, we would be getting if this was just a, uh, a neighborhood that was worth a billion dollars, or if it was, you know, another kind of industry that came in to build something here that was worth a billion dollars. So we're, we're, um, I mean, I, you know, we would not be getting this project, we will not get this project without the tax incentive agreement, right? There, there's just no way it happens. They don't build data centers, they don't put three billion dollars worth of computers on a piece of land if they have to pay full property tax and all that stuff. So it's a good deal, it is, it's taking us from a, a zero percent tax, uh, basically on this land, to a, a very significant new tax, source of tax income for the county, for the school district, for the city, and for everybody involved. That has been a subject of extensive negotiation to get that number as high as we could possibly get it. I think from my standpoint, speaking for the council and what, what discussions we've had publicly in our meetings, we, we absolutely did not, do not want to do this project unless we feel like the city of Stillwater is getting the most we can possibly get out of it, uh, which I, I feel confident that we are. Just to speak to a couple of the other things that have come up, um, eminent domain, certainly OG&E as a quasi-public utility has the power to use eminent domain, just like we do as a city, just like the county does for infrastructure projects. Uh, nobody wants to do that, happens very rarely. And the, the question though, in my mind, is if we're not expanding and, and, and putting things in place that require new utilities, require new, uh, infrastructure for our communities, that's a bad thing, right? We wouldn't want to just say, well, they might have to build a new power line, so we don't want to bring it into business. Right? I mean, I think it's a positive thing that we're creating the opportunity to say, we may need more power in this community. Uh, just like when the co- pipeline was built forty years ago, we didn't necessarily need fifty million gallons of water a day at that point, but if we wouldn't have built that infrastructure and wouldn't have gone out and spent the money necessary to expand that infrastructure, we wouldn't have the opportunity to grow as a city, we wouldn't have the opportunity to grow as a county, and we certainly wouldn't have this opportunity right now. So, I think the idea of saying, you know, we're going to have to expand utilities at some point if this thing's grow, if this thing grows, is certainly better than the alternative of saying, well, we don't have access to any other new utilities, and so therefore, we're never going to grow. We do have, we, I think we're very adamant about saying, anytime there needs to be anything new in place, this company will have to come to public entities and present that publicly, and it will be discussed publicly. They have no ability to expand this, uh, without them coming to public meetings in the city, uh, first, to say, this is what we need and this is why we need it. So, um, from that standpoint, I think we have as much control over this process as we possibly can have, uh, and it's a great opportunity for us as a, as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I haven't been here on this tour very long, but I've, I've been paying attention to, I've got enough detail. I'm, I'm ready to make a decision. I don't know, I'm just, I've got, I've been around, I've talked to people, and then that's what they talked about. Actually, somebody tried to ask me to be on that little plane thing, but it wasn't, and I think it's just outside of District Two, and I wasn't in, I wasn't in office yet. So I knew that was going on, that they were talking and communicating back and forth, I just couldn't, I couldn't do anything, so, um, but, uh, so, that's, yeah.
One question, I don't know if anybody can answer. What, how come the company doesn't have representative here today?
Yeah. Uh, the representatives, uh, were in town last week, and just because of the scheduling of this meeting, they're able to attend, but, uh, as you know, they've been available for questions all along through this process, and they, uh, both sides of the attorneys have worked together, uh, for all the taxing jurisdictions and the company, making sure everything is clear and transparent. I know one of the statements that, uh, Mr. Major Doug Major, the superintendent of Meridian Technology, said to his board last week was, the transparency has, like, really surprised him, the transparency from the company's attorneys. Company has a high reputation, and they, uh, they stand by that. So, uh, they, they were, they were unable to attend today.
This is a very, very big decision for the company, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, and that's why they, they've worked and done a lot of due diligence upfront, uh, answered a lot of questions, worked with Mr. Gomez on all the documents, and so, uh, but yes, they're, they're not here today.
Like I just said, I'm sorry.
No, it's not. Um, they did see an attorney who sat through the school board meeting, uh, didn't say anything, didn't, didn't offer any opinions. I don't think, he didn't come to the Meridian Board meeting. I mean, I think from the standpoint of this decision, from a taxing jurisdiction standpoint, we've got all the information we need from them. Um, we don't really want them up here advocating for their position. This is a decision, I think, among our taxing jurisdictions that we as a community have to make. Um, we have had that, uh, that discussion over the last year or more, and, and, you know, I'm actually kind of, I find it better that they're not here trying to advocate for, for a community decision that we've got to make on our own, um, and, and they haven't been, you know, even in the other, they did not speak, uh, at our city council meeting on this subject, they didn't speak at the school board meeting, even though they had a guy sitting in the, in the room, and they, they didn't even come to the Meridian meeting either. So I don't think it's particularly, uh, odd that they don't have to be here today.
Well, I just, not necessarily advocate, but be available to answer any questions.
Yeah, well, I mean, like I said, I think the, the tax, or the tax incentive, uh, agreement that we're considering, that you as a board are considering at this point, really speaks for itself, and we've done all the, the negotiating and the discussion that we can do, it's been approved by the council, and so it's really just, uh, is this something that the county, board of county commissioners wants to, um, wants to also join and, and say this is a, a positive benefit for our community going into the future.
Has there been, because I had some constituents in Cushing area inquire if this would, if OG&E would raise their rates due to this? There's no sign of that?
No, it's an independent, Rhonda. I mean, I, I've not heard of that or think how that would affect the rate or the amount of rate structure, but no, it's, it's an independent. And typically, the greater load, the greater, yeah. Yeah, the better load, the more load is the better on your rate.
Laurie Smith, electric utility director for the city of Stillwater. Uh, typically, a high load factor load like this, which means that, you know, it's, it's pulling about ninety percent of its peak capacity at all time, uh, the more kilowatt hours you sell it, typically, uh, it drives down the cost of energy, simply because you're selling more and it's at a real high load. And so, I can't really speak for OG&E, but that's what would happen with us, and that's what will happen with us when we serve approximately about twenty-five megawatts of this load. Uh, the, the net impacts, the high load factor will actually push down our, our costs to service. So typically, it's a, it's a.
Is there a policy on priority? Who's prioritized? Should there be a power outage?
There, there certainly is, but again, I don't know, I can't speak for OG&E. Uh, I'm sure that there is during times of curtailment. Yeah, for sure. And so, also, from what I've heard in the industry, you know, a lot of these big companies that come in and do this, you know, they pay their fair share, like Brady said. They come in, and if there's a, something else that has to be built down the line, they typically will, will either pay for it or, or share that cost. It's really a win.
And I know that these questions are outside of this agreement, but I'm trying to advocate for the people that have reached out to me.
Sure, we understand that, absolutely.
All right, any other questions?
I just know the stat is, we have constituents in our county, three to four hundred people that come to those and upset because that's what all this is for, is these data centers, it gives weight to this power to come across their property, taking their property.
Yep.
And there's going to be more, the state for it.
There's going to be more, what?
That's.
So, I, I've thought about that a lot too. If, if, for whatever reason, they decided not to build in Payne County, say they put it in Supoka, still going to be on OG&E, still going to be running transmission lines to power it, but Payne County won't be getting any benefit from it.
Yeah, but the land owners are the ones that lose out.
But if they build it prior, they're still going to build a transmission line to it, is my thought. They're still going to get the power. But I agree, I'm totally against, uh, the eminent domain process and people having their property rights violated. And that's the reason we held all those meetings, uh, for the, uh, in the ATC corridor. So, my thought is if, if, if they don't build in Payne County, and they build in a neighboring county, those same transmission lines that are proposed will still be powering it, we just won't be getting any benefit. Is my thought, I don't know. I, I wish I could see into the future in this case and see what's going to be best and what the negative outcomes are going to be, but I can't.
And I'm also, there's also a lot of concern about the water, twenty-five years with this amount of water, with the droughts and stuff that have it, and so, there's a lot of concern with that. There's a lot of cities, there's Enid, Ottesville, I'm thinking of us, it's on the bottom of the list.
Yeah, and one of the things we mentioned at the last meeting was, uh, you know, quasi-unique reservoir. You know, in the years, decades of drought, it remains full, it has a big catchment area coming all the way from the Rockies. And that is one reason we maintain our unique, uh, water rights, uh, even with the other communities, uh, tapping onto that lake. So it's, it's a very unique reservoir, and that is a, a great benefit to the city and the county.
Motion and seconded, the agreement. We'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Markham? Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavan? Item B, discussion possible action, resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero one, resolution approving in Oklahoma Local Development Act, act continuing between Skipper LLC, uh, city, uh, of Stillwater, Oklahoma, Board of Education, Independent School District Number Sixteen in Payne County, the Stillwater Public Schools, Board of Education, and Meridian Technology Center, Board of County Commissioners of Payne County, and the Board of County Health Department.
Make a motion approving the resolution. Item B, five B, sorry, be specific. Don't you say all that out?
No, this is resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero one. Motion has been made and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero one? Commissioner Markham? Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavan? Item C, discussion possible action agreement for roadside roadway integrated vegetation management and maintenance service between Shitigre LLC and the Board of County Commissioners.